Which would allow them to proceed. Maybe some official thinking about whether they'll open up other zoning activities.
This is how special these programs get, get generated.
This isn't a special program.
No, I know it's not. But it's, uh...
Yeah.
Yeah. But it is, because you have something that in general you're favorable for a particular application. You may be in favor of it, but there may be instances where you would not.
I think, yeah, I don't think the citizens of Harris County would want to be going down the highway in our beautiful countryside and all these pastures have acres of solar family on them. I don't think they would like that situation. I don't know.
Well, if you were going to strike, I would only strike the residential and agriculture, leave in the commercial manufacturing and resort. For those other use.
Commercial man... Yeah, that makes sense. Commercial manufacturing resort. Despite residential at least, at least in... It hasn't been an easy outcrop, residential approach.
Greg, say, in agricultural...
Actually, there's a big push by the state to put it in agricultural areas. And they are trying to get... They've talked to several places in this county about putting solar farms. We had one big proposal that was... I'm sorry, I'm here listening.
I really like the way I'm looking at the citizens before we come to that.
Yeah, Tracy, yeah, that Tracy.
Um, this text amendment is strictly for the smaller panel sites, and they're treated as an accessory use. And which means that you have to have a structure in the residential and agricultural that we require to be in the backyard. We have some in the county now own the roofs. This was a freestanding. In my staff report, I did say that we need to look at solar farms in the future. This does not tackle anything that's a principal use on the property. This does not tackle anything that's looking at acreage greater than five acres. This is strictly as an accessory use to an existing structure of the site. So I don't want you to get... Think that this was made for driving by and seeing the solar panel farms, because that's not what this text amendment was. I do acknowledge that that's something that the county needs to look at for the future, because we did have several phone calls for the solar farms, but the only one that got selected was the solar panel site.
Is there any limit in accessory uses for the size or amount of space it could cover?
I believe that the, um, the... It was 50% unless the zoning district had something smaller. I think residential is 25%. I think commercial's at 50%. The agricultural goes to what the use of the property is. So if it is a commercial use, it'd be 50%. So residential use, it'd be the 25% coverage in the backyard. I think commercial, the text amendments, the side and the rear yard. The agricultural residential is rear yard only.
And that's 25% of the rear yard or of the whole property?
Of the rear... Of the rear yard with the setbacks.
Of the required rear yard.
Yes.
But would the house also be counted as part of that?
All of that's the improved surface. So yes, all of that counts as the total thing with the setback, and it is 25% of the lot, including the house and accessory building. Any other building is on there.
What is the setback?
The... For residents, it's 50 foot front, 35 foot rear, 10 feet side setbacks. And this is a two-story house that is 12 feet. And if it's for a lot, then it's 50 on both sides of the farm.
Just fits in the district.
Yeah.
I'm a little afraid of too, not for this use, but just, uh, open the door.
If I can turn it in. If someone could separate this out and get this included.
Maybe we restrict it, this one, and make it a narrow focus and then work on what we do.
Yeah, it's part of our revamping of all looking in.
Then you can eliminate all the districts except for resort in this particular case.
Yeah.
And they've got to bring in the addendum to the master plan to the planning commission next meeting.
If it's allowed in resort, this is, you know, a little bit different. Folks that were here before are the last, you know, over the backwater. That's resort. Is each individual house there considered a resort?
Yeah.
So each one of them could do that, so... So then you're putting it in residential.
But speaking of, you have to say they have to amend the master plan, and I don't see one individual being able to amend the master plan.
For both the hills, but not for the backwaters.
Well, actually, the text amendment, I said that unless it was only individual property.
Right.
Then they would have to revise the master plan. I didn't see that each individual person in resort would have to come and get the master plan revised by a soul pound in the backyard. So that would need to address.
Are we not... Are we not supposed to want a resort as well?
Well, that's, yeah.
Yeah.
It's still ready. Backwater, too.
Could you... Could you limit just this to resort zoning would exclude any residentially zone property this resort?
Well, you got residential Calway, too.
Oh, no, that's another question, but I think...
I suppose you could just approve it for just one... Just one thing while we work on it.
Approve it for this one thing?
Approve it and then put a 90-day court board on him. Have you approved it? Is legal to do that?
That would limit the resort, but I don't see why you couldn't exclude residential resort areas, which would include the Piedmont, include the hills, and include everything on the backwater, but would also include... But that way you limit the Calway Gardens to the other several places that are around that are on the resort. Now, and then you can always come back and amend your ordinance to say, you know, to put in residential portions of the resort that are residential.
And Calway is... I mean, they do have residential elements out there with the golf cottages and that kind of stuff. Is this part... Is this part of foundation, and that property is not part of the foundation? This is Calway Foundation property.
Resort excluding residential use?
Yeah, you could just say resort excluding residential use, and then, you know, and that will solve your problem for the time being, you know, I think.
Yeah, that's... And I think that's what we're trying to do, is just not open the door for everything until we get potential research, but allow this one to go forward or...
Well, another concern that I have is, you know, technology changes, and, you know, 20, 30, 30 years ago, there were these... The most recent technology was these huge satellite dishes.
Right.
And you see all of those out in the country and everything else. The technology changes, and the dishes are this big, and nobody ever gets rid of the of the huge satellite dishes. And that's... That's my concern. And if we have these, uh, the solar panels everywhere, the technology changes, which it probably will, then this is going to be abandoned and slightly, and no one's going to get well.
There's actually a requirement that it can be disbanded within a year. Yeah, that's what I was thinking, if it does.
It's one thing to say that that's going to happen, and it's another thing to put actually...
Six months. Are these supplementary district regulations a part of this? Or do we have to...
Yes, yes.
We don't have to specifically make them a part, they are a part.
That's the zoning amendment.
Okay.
That if you're going to take everything out except for the resort, it's excluding the residential.
Excluding residential.
On 23.1A, you need to leave the second sentence, but you can delete the first sentence. That's the one that says, you don't decide your own, keep the first sentence, keep the second sentence.
All right.
You could probably really delete the parts that's not on an individual residential property. Would you do that in there and take it out, since it's not going to apply anyway?
I think we leave it, more than leave it, and just clarifies that.
Right.
This might be. Okay. So now that we have thoroughly confused ourselves.
Okay.
Do I have a motion?
Will apply only to...
I will make the motion that we... For approval, a resort only and with going with this in terms of excluding the residential uses and striking the first sentence in A, 23.1A. Okay, do I have a second? I'll second. Got a motion in a second discussion. All in favor of the motion, signal raise your hand. Motion carries. All right. Thank you, sir. Good luck, too. Appreciate the... All right. And we go back to number six. We have Rich Mahoney, Assistant District Attorney, who requested to give us an update on what's going on in attorney's office. And I guess he brought his hair on some of his... Oh, she's got her own thing, right? Okay, I didn't know that she was going to weigh in on yours also.
Yeah.
Okay. All right, go ahead, Rich.
Okay, I'm going to clear briefly. Ms. Slater, where you wanted to be here tonight, but she has a similar matter that she's having to address with the legislature body in Columbus.
She'd rather be in Columbus than here.
Sir?
She'd rather be in Columbus than here.
Well, no, she wanted to come out here. She certainly don't want to be down with what she's having to deal with. It's a similar issue. The biggest difference that I see is they're trying to devise a solution to jail overcrowding, caseload management, cases taken forever to get to court. What I'm here to tell you about is a solution that we came up with and that job proved over the last two years, basically getting the two lawyers out here. We have a solution, and it's working. The... I just want to overwhelm you with numbers, but what I did was blew up some... A piece of the tracker system we have to track cases in that breaks them down, felony, misdemeanors, so forth. The bottom one is in 2013. We had about 538 pending cases when we started out in 2013. As you go through each month of the year, when you come up to 2014, you see we had 612. The numbers were going up. We wound up...
Great statement, Chris. So this is, uh, this... I'm sure I haven't answered the question. These are pending cases, but then when you go from the 538, 555 there, you know...
Yes, sir.
That would be net. Is that right?
Those are still open pending cases.
Not in good some cases, but more coming.
If you see, you'll see open. We opened up 38 places, and January we closed 21.
Because basically we netted out...
And this is the net amount, right? So you can see how the numbers would gradually increase, and what... What I did was I realized the judges were making changes. They were going to make... They were going to go... Two judges in Columbus.
Want to see that? The vet...
Yeah, I was just looking for it.
It's... Unless you know what it is, there are a lot of different things. This is a tracker system. It's a system that the prosecuting attorneys, councils use for throughout the state of Georgia that prosecutors use. It's a way of tracking your cases. If you don't know what you got, how you going to deal with it?
Well, that doesn't include juvenile.
Sir, this does not include juvenile or probate, which I do around 250 cases in probate and juvenile. Juvenile is not put into the system because we have to protect the juveniles and the information by that, and this system can be accessed by other DA's office, and so we have to... We don't put the juveniles into the system. So it does not include that, which our office also does. But when I saw that the judges were changing the way they were going to have to do it in Columbus, because that jail is just packed, the cost of billions of dollars down there, housing inmates, and they can't seem to do much to get it out. And they changed their system from two judges in Muskogee County to four judges, and starting January the 1st, they now go to seven judges. They have seven judges assigned caseloads, equal caseloads, criminal cases in Columbus along with the vast civil. And every time something like that happens, it affects me, because Ms. Slater only has limited state attorneys, eight, nine of them, I think now, that she has, that she can send through six counties that's in her circuit, and of course, Muskogee County being the biggest one. And so she was having to pull that out, and that's what I brought to y'all. Y'all realized it, and as she's pulling those lawyers out, the beginning of this year, you'll see that the numbers continue to go up, open 56, close 20, 64, 75, open up 66, close 33. Basically, what happened is that we ran up about 90 cases this year during the transition. And I won't leave it up, because once y'all made the transition, there were lots of cases pending, and I really pushed those into the system. And what you can see is that we start closing more and more cases. The first five months, we ran up about 90 cases, I think. The next five months, we have dropped about 32 cases. So if you put it on a graph, instead of the cases accumulating more and more, we got to the maximum point, which was 702, and as you can see, they start coming down. And at the end of October, we're down to 670. So that graph is no longer going up. It's leveled off, and it's now coming down. And I'm cutting it down without those two lawyers. It's just no way that I could have stopped the bleeding out there. It just got worse and worse. The bigger the caseload, the longer it is before you get a case into the system. And one of the grand jurors, this grand juror, I think we have here, we took a bunch of cases in, because I had put all of those cases into the system, getting ready for them. One of the grand jurors asked my boss, why aren't we looking at cases that are a year and a half old, two years old, almost? And this was the reason why. But we explained to them what y'all did and how we are now addressing these. We bring the grand jury back twice, and in fact, we have a grand jury coming back in the morning with about 25 more cases going to them tomorrow. But the numbers are dropping, and they are going down. One of the biggest issues of cases lasting a long time is jail overcrowding. And I don't know if y'all read the Freedom Pleasure or not, but there's a lot of publicity about it, and I'm sure there'll be some writing about it tomorrow about proposals they're trying to come up with. I have developed a system out here where we print out the jail list several times a month. We go through it, we're looking to see who's in there, so that nobody gets slipped over and in it. We now, as of... This was November the 3rd, when I printed this, 74 inmates in your jail. That's room for a little over 100, so you've got about a 25, 30% vacancy rate. And I keep it that way, okay? And it's really easy to do with 100 or so cases that you have in there. It's a lot harder with, you know, in Columbus, when you got 1500 guys sitting in the jail. But if you monitor these things, and one of my attorneys, Ms. Sykes, does this for me, and she's very meticulous with it, goes through it and lists out whose it is, why they're in there, and these are the cases we move, and it's saving. If you've got 25 people not sitting in that jail, how much does it cost per inmate? I hear estimates $20, $25 an inmate a day. Do some math, that's a lot of money by doing this. And this is what our office is doing for you. I just wanted to update you with it and that you see this. I have... This is not something that solves in five months or four months that I'm looking at, but I am going in the direction I want to go, and I have, in my mind, when I came up with these ideas, was like an 18-month plan. I want to get these pending cases down close to 400. It's about an 18 to 24-month process for me to get it there, but it can be done, and what I've been able to do, what you have given me, the tools up there, is start that process. It's not the end game. There are other issues that I will continue to bring up with you, show these in the office, but hiring those two lawyers was... It just would not have been possible without them. I want y'all to know that we appreciate that, and Ms. Slater appreciates it, and that without it, I couldn't do this.
Do you anticipate that the rate of decrease will increase or will...
Well, I'm quite sure of that.
I'd be glad to see it going down. It's going down marginally.
Yeah, well, yeah, it's marginally, because we just got started. We are... You know, Ms. Sykes came in mid-March, and Ms. Dixon Brown, she got married, got back with honey a couple of weeks ago. She, you know, she's been here for 90 days now. So in that relatively short period of time, five months, basically, since they got in here, we've shown that we stopped the increase and we started it down. And I can increase the amounts, the way they drop in the future, once the two ladies that were with me get fully accommodated to the system. Now, one thing I did want you to see is that, and this is an entire year, we opened up 607 cases, closed 553 last year. And this is odd, but at 10 months into it, we've opened up 607 cases, the same amount of cases in the potential of an entire year, and we've already closed more this year than we did last year in 10 months. Unfortunately, more cases coming in, and this will happen from year to year. Sometimes you'll get, you know, 50, 60 cases more this year than you did last year, and I'm hoping that 2014 is just one of those geez of this year. 2015, the numbers will be down, I hope. But there are more cases coming into the system up here, and we do have some things that are concerning me. I have pending now two armed robbers, and we don't have armed robbers in Harris County. I had a nasty home invasion. People are laying on the floor, duct taped up, robbed here in Harris County. We didn't have a home invasion, and we take those seriously. One of them is a juvenile. Our first house, we forced him to be a 440, and we have a juvenile who is being treated as an adult, and his case goes to the grand jury tomorrow. If I get him indicted in less than 90 days, he's in our jail. He won't get out of our jail until I get him in court and try the case.
He's in jail, not the YTC?
Well, he's at the YTC. He's incarcerated, but he's not allowed to... When you have these, they're not allowed to be in with anyone 17 or older. They have to be with juvenile, so he's at the YTC. But this is just what we're doing, and we want to keep that sort of stuff out of Harris County, because Harris County don't have armed robbers, home invasions, and things like that, make sure. When they do it, we want to send a message, you come out here doing this, you should have stayed in this county. They were not Harris County residents, they were outside of here. And there was some drugs involved, and the victim is not squeaky clean, but there was some drug issues involved in it. Again, I just wanted to brief you and show you what it was. It's not just money. Throw at a problem is money solving the problem.
Richard, have we increased the number of weeks of criminal audits in the county?
They did this year, and I believe that it's about the same amount next year as it is this year. We just... I haven't got the official judges scheduled yet, but I do believe that the number of weeks will be essentially the same, and it was an increase last year. I think one of the differences with the two judges, and I understand it's going to be Chief Judge Gil McBride and our senior, well, senior judge Frank Jurgen will be the two judges. Want to come out here? They all want to come out here. I don't know why they like Harris County, but those two, and those are two of the most experienced judges we have, and I think that Judge McBride is going to handle mostly of the civil cases out here, but they don't try a lot of civil cases in Superior Court, and he has indicated that I can put down criminal cases as backups for those weeks. So we basically kind of try weeks every single month, rather than six a year. We're now going to go to an additional of 12.
And Judge River will be here as well.
Okay. So all the judges visit out here. They all want to come out and visit in Harris County. We have a Harris week in which, and a visiting day once a month, and all the other judges too. Those two judges are stationed here, one primarily criminal, the other primarily civil, but the other judges also come out and fill out an assist also. But yet, we're going to increase it, and that will allow me to spring more of these cases into the system issue and get them closed, hoping more and keep me closer to that date, unfortunately.
Hard to continue to...
Thank you, Richard. All right. Thanks, Richard.
Appreciate you sharing that.
Sir.
Ms. Harrelson, I think we can distribute now.
All right. Next on the agenda is Board of Zoning Adjustments reappointment. Term Rick Cozine expires September 30th, and is considered a reappointment. He's an appointment of District 3 Commissioner. New term expires September 30th for 2017.
As stated, he is willing to serve another term. Very valuable asset. He's the vice chair also of the CCA, so...
Submotion.
That's a hundred.
All right. We have a motion from Ms. Langston, the second and the second, and we'll deal with that real quick. Any discussion? All in favor, so you can raise your hand. Motion carries. All right. Greg?
I just have one item on the agenda, and I discussed it with the attorney before the meeting. The bridge contract that we let and decided to drop one of the bridges, we go discuss it with a contractor, and he said that we drop the bridge, but they would have to raise the mobilization costs, because that would cross the three bridges, and that would increase the cost $10,000 for the two bridges, which is still lower, is still the low bidder. I just want to make sure that's okay with the commission.
$10,000 per bridge?
No.
Just total of $10,000?
Correct. And I also have gotten with engineer, and we have a change order that we're going to put in place after we let the contract, but we'll reduce it by another $10,000, so we'll break even, and that is so that they don't have to... They're going to bolt the garglets on instead of welding them. So it will still save the same amount of money if I drop them to one bridge, if that makes sense.
Okay.
Just want to make the commission aware, don't have an issue with that.
Do you have any problems with that?
All right. Well, this should have us seeing it as done.
All right, Mr. Saylor, Project River.
Yes, sir. There is a memorandum of understanding that you've looked at, and we still need to vote to approve it. I think circulated this ground, and I think most of the questions have been answered, but the Project River is not... The entity has not wanted... Has not disclosed, been disclosed enough yet, but they want to get the MOU nailed down first, and then they have a... Some... They don't make the announcement. But this is a facility that is 250,000 square feet. It'll be built in your industrial park. It'll be a 16 and a half million dollar project. The goal is 200 jobs within 36 months. It'll be built on about 32 acres, and the company is being entirely responsible for constructing the facility and as well as buying its own equipment to go in the facility for the manufacturing purpose. It will not... No, you will not be having to finance any of the facility or the equipment. The only thing you'll do is provide a phase one, which you've already done when you bought the property. The MOU provides that West Point, because it is in the city limits of West Point, is a good part of the park is because of Xanax. They'll provide water, sewer, and two, and natural gas to the plant, and then the electricity will be determined by the KW load. The incentives that you're offering this company to come, which they have accepted, is that at the end of the payment period, which will be five years, they will... You will sell them the land at the rate of $10 per acre. In essence, you're conveying the land to them at no cost. The... You will provide a 50% tax abatement for five years, and then they will have a... In other words, they will provide a... Since you own the property, there will be no taxes levied, but there'll be a payment in lieu of taxes agreements that they will sign, and they will pay 50% of all the taxes that would be otherwise levied for that five-year period of time. They will grade the site themselves at their own cost. You will have agreed to redesign the road median of progress parkway so they can have access and in particular portions of that parkway to the property. There is a retaining pond that you will retain, that you will maintain, and then also there's some clawback if they fail to meet the employment obligations that they have, and they'll lose to some of the taxes. that they have, and they'll lose some of the taxing, taxing base. So I recommend this to you. There will be, of course, some minor changes in the, in the wording of the MOU, such as, we, I think the MOU had provided that there was somebody other than West Point would be providing natural gas. We just need to amend that. And there are a couple of editorial changes like that. But I, subject to those small editorial changes, I recommend this to you for your approval.
Oh, yeah.
If there is a request from the MOU to be given to you, that I think we'll probably need to redact the, the name of the company out of it to protect their identity subject to the execution of the Act.
And I did have a conversation today, John. There are two or three small points supposedly that they do wanna discuss. Dave Leisler tried to say, kind of, right, talking about.
So, but I think the main parts of the, you know, and if you approve it, subject to the, and then delegate that responsibility to make those minor changes to you as chairman. I think then that will make the project go.
All right. Thank you, sir. Do I have a motion?
I'll make the motion to approve it and delegate that. I will make those changes to the chair.
All right. Thank you. We have a motion and a second. Any other discussion? All right. All in favor of the motion, say if I raise your hand. Motion carries.
Mr. Chairman, the second thing that I have is an agreement with the clerk of Superior Court regarding the technology funds. The clerk's here, and whether, maybe you wish to talk to her about it. But I will, you know, because of the passing of the hour, I will try, will try to explain it. The disagreement is between you and the commission and the clerk. It's for a one-year term. It'll be renewed annually unless you give notice by October one of each year. Now, what this agreement will do, will give the, will give Stacy, the clerk of Superior Court, the right to retain certain technology funds. The clerk here is, is our most clerk, is a member of the Georgia State Clerk's Association, or Authority, rather, which they maintain a website. And a great, and all the deed records are put on the website as well as the UCC and the liens and other things that are, that are filed in the clerk's office. You can go on that website, you can search that, and search on that website if you wish to print documents out, or you, or I think there's an annual fee also that you cost, you will pay, have to pay, public pays to do that. The, and in the past three years, there's, the clerk has gotten fourteen thousand eight hundred dollars in 2011, twenty-one thousand nine hundred dollars in 2012. And this, in 2013 was twenty-four thousand five forty-seven. What this agreement will do is allow Stacy to retain those funds and use those funds in her office for updating technology. And to be able to digitize records. And that is going to become a major, major event and a major task that, just trying to manage all the paper and the documents that are filed, either the deed records, liens, the court pending records, criminal cases, you name it, and it just, it just goes on and on and on. So that's what you will allow her to do. She may, may want, may want some comments in addition to that.
I'll, I will be there. The Authority is a wonderful, a wonderful company. They have provided a lot of monies to the clerks. And I'll give you an example. Just recently, I went with the Newville State Fender, Main Street Technologies. And I hired Main Street to do a special project for me. As of now, they have taken all of my flats, scanned them in, and indexed them. They are on my local server here. They have also scanned in all of my deed books, plus some indexes. And what that has done, I brought the wrong book. But basically, that has cost, or wait a minute, that has cost about forty-six thousand dollars, which this fund has paid for. It didn't come out of my budget, it came out of this fund. And therefore, if something were to happen, which I hope it would not, but if it were to happen like it did in Hancock Canyon, and we burn to the ground, I would be up and running in a decade. So it's a great resource. It has bought my office a wide format printer, so people can come in and get just huge copies of their flats without having to get many small ones and piecemeal them together. It has bought rolling deed shells, which is, if you come in, you can say, "I'm tight on space." So those rolling deed shells have saved a lot of space. But it's been great over the years, and I just wish to, I wish that y'all, I hope that you signed the agreement and that I can keep improving my office in the real estate with these funds. Y'all have any questions?
Do I get any questions?
I know it's late, it's time to go home, everybody.
Do I have a motion to approve this, Johnny?
Yes, yes, I, yes, I would approve it.
Yeah, we got a motion from...
And recommend it to you.
Mr. Woods, do we have a second?
Second.
All right, with a second. Any other discussion?
I have a comment. Ms. Harrelson is also the clerk of the Superior Court. And I'm not sure I have a conflict here, but avoid any appearance of any impropriety. I believe it's in my best interest to abstain, okay? But for discussion.
All right. All right, we'll allow you to do that. All in favor of the motion, say if I raise your hand. Motion carries three-oh, with one kind of political interest. To those few folks that are still here, one, one bitter news from the polls. I don't know if it's final, final or not. Ms. Langston has won reelection. Congratulations.
Thank you.
And the District One seat, Martha Chute, has been elected. And that's, that's the results. Don't have any of the statewide or other results up here.
Can I get a light?
Yes.
Now, I'll get you both yourself?
Yeah.
You gotta like it.
Maybe this is not the time or the place, but since District One is and has been vacant, I'll be going to swear in Ms. Chute earlier than waiting until the first of January.
The regulation, since, since Mr. White was formally removed from the office and pled guilty, he is then permanently, it is a permanent vacancy. With the permanent vacancy, our nineteen eighty-four ordinance dictates that Board of Commissioners, as long as the term remain in office is less than six months, the Board of Commissioners has the right to appoint the person to serve for the remainder of this current term. I think we had kind of said we would wait and see what the results of the election were. And I think it's in order for us tonight, if it's...
I would, I would wait until the next meeting, until such time...
Till the elections are...
Until the election is certified.
Or official.
Well, my thought is gonna be, excuse me for stepping on your toes, Mr. Attorney. If it's certified on Friday, we could hold a one-subject special meeting for five minutes if you wanna do that at some point in time, so she could attend the next meeting.
Or you can do it during the next meeting.
Yes.
Yeah.
Could you do it now in pending, that was also certified?
I would wait for it to be certified.
I think that's right.
I would be part of your journey.
Yeah, I think you better wait for it to be certified.
So, when is, when is supposed to be certified?
On Friday? Friday. We can either call a special meeting...
I will be up here anyway on Friday. We're gonna, we're gonna inaugurate our new probate judge. I guess it's gonna be a vestiture service on Friday. I'll be up there anyway.
Some people are gonna be out of town.
Yeah. Who else I could be here?
And I'll be out of town, too.
I like, I like our county.
Rule one of court.
I like our county attorney's suggestion. I think that's probably wise.
Good, good, right at the beginning of the next meeting.
And then she may take her seat.
All right. Okay.
And one more.
All right. Then we move on to the next, next one, Mr. Taylor.
Yes, sir. This is a very brief one. Every year, you enter into an agreement with the tax assessor, asking you to enter into an agreement for printing services to print the personal property returns for, for the year. And actually, this will run for two years, and this will be for the, for the Thompson movers to print the bills. And the fee specified in the agreement that you have in, in front of you. And there also for, not only for the bills, but also for the assessment notices that go out. And the, of course, the subject to, and the changes in the postage fees. But this is something that you do regularly, and I recommend it to you for your approval.
Thank you, sir. Do I have a motion?
I'll make a motion.
Got a motion and a second. Any other discussion? All right, all in favor, say if I raise your hand. Motion carries. That concludes the agenda for the evening. Unless we have any need for a second session at all?
I tried to keep the agenda shorter, Mr. Chairman, but I was unsuccessful.
Okay. All right, now we'll make a motion for a second. Second and all in favor. All right. Stand your jury.
Okay.
Except for whatever needs to be...